Honorable Robert Chagulani.
You can give him the national anthem. He does good.
People power! Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have the two national anthems, one from the Republic of Uganda and the other from the United States of America. Let's start the national anthem with the one from the Republic of Uganda. Thank you so much. And someone in the machines, please, give us the national anthem of Uganda. Thank you so much. And right now, let's go straight to the national anthem of the United States, "The Star," as you know it. Thank you so much. We are getting it. God bless. We are getting it. It is a beautiful song also. Thank you, my brother. God bless America, my home sweet home. Thank you so much. You can have your seats. Thank you so much. Fellow Ugandans. Thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Could you turn it off for me? Thank you. Bostonians, I love you so much. People power! People power? I know you guys are really waiting to hear from the Honorable Member of Parliament, and you know what he went through. But this is what I want to tell you. We know why we are here. This is not a violent organization. It's not a violent movement. We are here because we are concerned about mother country Uganda. We don't want the price of... Ugandans are saying enough is enough. We must take control of our country. We must put our country in the hands of the young people that have the vision, that can dream and dream better. That's the Uganda we are working towards. And I know, Honorable Robert Chagulani, he went through whatever he went through because he rose up and spoke. And today, we are going to be hearing from him. But before we proceed, I would like to dedicate this town hall meeting in the hands of the Almighty. And I'm going to be inviting Sheikh Mayanja to take over from here as we commit this meeting into the hands of God. Thank you so much. People power! People power! Your Honorable Chagulani, Honorable Chagulani. The Christian Christians who are living in this country are the ones who are suffering. They 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 are the ones who are suffering. It's right. They are the ones who are suffering. 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 Or your family, or a relative, or a friend of yours are losing one of his property. They are the ones who are suffering. 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 I guess each of you here, they are the ones who are suffering. 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 At the end of the day, they are the ones who are suffering. 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 Why you ask Allah to help us? They are the ones who are suffering. 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 Sallallahu alaihi wasallam. I am the one who is suffering. They are the ones who are 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 suffering. I am the one who is suffering. They are the ones who are 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 suffering. I am the one who is suffering. They are the ones who are 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 suffering. I am the one who is suffering. They are the ones who are 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 suffering. But I am the one who is suffering. They are the ones who are suffering. Amen. Wa sallim lailahumma ala muhammad wa ala alihi wa sahbihi wa sallim. Salaam alaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Thank you so much. That is one of our community leaders and Sheikh Mayanja. Right now, we have a very tight schedule because the Honorable will be leaving shortly. But we'll have a Q and A session immediately when he has finished talking to us. But before he talks to us, I would like to take this opportunity to have at least two or three people from the community that are going to be speaking. And each one of them, I'm just going to give them five minutes to talk to you. Then, one of my organizers will invite the Honorable to speak to you. So right now, let me take this opportunity to invite our one and only sister Shaline Nablime to come up and say a word or two to the Ugandan community. Shaline Nablime, you are welcome. Where is my sister Shaline Nablime? She's coming. That is one of our own who is running for office in the United States of America. She's going to be speaking just only in five minutes. And she will introduce the gentleman who is coming with her. Thank you so much. Yes. Yes, my sister.
Salaam alaikum. Sheikh Mayanja, Honorable Robert, Chagulani, ladies and gentlemen. What an honor and a privilege it is for me to be here with you today. What an honor and a privilege it is to share the same stage with a hero and esteemed member of parliament, a freedom fighter, a voice for the voiceless, and a selfless leader who in his own words is willing to die trying. In his interview with Scott Simon, he describes the Pearl of Africa as a country where life doesn't mean a thing anymore. This is not the Uganda we know. This is not the Uganda we know and love. That is why we're here today. And we're not alone. People in this community, like my friend and neighbor Alex, are with us. Alex works for the Harvard Negotiation Project. He's here with us. Alex, where are you? Thank you. Many, many people like Alex are with us. We're not in this fight together. We're not in this fight alone. We're together. And I'm grateful for people like him. And there's more. There's our mayor, there are the councillors in Waltham, and a slew of people who we can count on to be a support and a resource. Honorable Chagulani, we are proud of the stance that you have taken. And we don't take your actions or fight lightly. When the historians pen this, they will write about a man who saw injustice and inhuman atrocities against his people and had the courage to fight. My name is Shaline Nablime, and I'm a candidate for city council right here in Ward 6 in Waltham. I am running because I believe that government should work for the people. I am running with a different approach to governance, one of openness, transparency, and inclusivity. So when you cast your vote for me, you're casting a vote for representation. You're casting a vote... You're casting a vote that people back home can't cast. You're casting a vote for open, transparent, and inclusive government. And I am so proud of our sense of community. I'm so proud of the fact that we are able to be Americans while maintaining our Ugandan culture. I'm so grateful. Lastly, I'm so grateful for our ability to mobilize and organize around the issues that matter to us, especially the reason why we're here today. Honorable Robert Chagulani, our people, our power.
She's running for office. So don't forget to vote November. You'll see her on the ballot.
No, 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 no.
Oh, you don't? I'm sorry.
September 25th. It's a crazy special election, smacked up in the middle of the state election. So the special election is September 25th. Get out and vote because your vote matters. And by the way, this seat was lost once by just six votes. So I need each and every one of you. Please get out and vote. Let your voice be heard here so our people can be encouraged. Thank you.
Thank you so much, my sister. We are trying to really, really catch up on time because we lost some time. But that's okay. We have one of our own elders before I invite him to say a word or two just for only five minutes. I would like to acknowledge and to thank the volunteer team. We call it the People Power Team that has been behind this with our Muslim brothers who really did this marvelous on a very short notice to organize this town hall meeting. So thank you so much, the volunteer team. Some of them are seated there. Some of them don't want to be mentioned by name. But they know themselves. They have done a great work. Thank you so much. There's things I want to take out of the way. We have two boxes. You know that things cannot move without money. And money is one of those toughest things to talk about. But you know that we need money. We need money for lawyers. We need money for medical expenses. We need money for those that are still in jail. So those boxes are going to be on the outside. You can read. You can go over there, read and see which box you can drop something. Okay, the boxes are there. So every penny is going to the cause. None of this volunteer team is taking a penny because we are here to fight a just cause. Thank you so much. In our midst, we have religious leaders. And they'll be invited later when the Honorable is done speaking. But right now, let me take this opportunity to invite Pastor Belinda, as one of our elders, to come and say a word or two. And Pastor, five minutes, strictly five minutes because the Honorable is supposed to be flying out shortly. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, I was invited to speak as an elder on behalf of all Ugandans who are here. As Ugandans, we want to welcome Honorable Chagulani. Can you wave to Honorable Chagulani and welcome him to Boston? I've been given five minutes, and I want to use it wisely. Now, as Ugandans in Boston, we are citizens of Uganda. And some of us, we are citizens of the United States. Some of you have what we call dual citizenship. Others, you are in the process. There is one thing that we've learnt when we are here. When you are a citizen, you have rights and privileges. Do you understand what I'm saying? You have a right to vote. You have a right to demonstrate when things are not right. You have a right. You know, there are rights. And I believe in Uganda. Uganda has got a constitution, and there are rights. Now, as Ugandans in diaspora, we want to use our rights to voice ourselves. And this is one of the ways for us to voice ourselves. And we want to take this opportunity as we are on the air to tell every Ugandan in Uganda that as a Ugandan citizen, you have a right to do everything within your citizenship. And that's what Honorable Chagulani is doing. Can you clap for him? We are not trying to revolt. We are not trying to cause rebellion. We want to ask our leaders in Uganda that as Ugandans, we don't have to be prosecuted when we speak. We want to request the President, President, that he has been in power for 33 years. He has served three generations. You know, a generation is 40 years. And it's time for change. He served my father. He has served me. And he has served our sons. Now, he's trying to serve our grandchildren. Is that fair? No! So that's why we are here, Honorable Chagulani. Sir, Mr. Chagulani, you're honorable. We want you to take back the message to the Ugandan parliament, to everybody that the Ugandans in diaspora, they have a voice, and you have to listen to them. No Ugandan should be prosecuted. We want a free Uganda whereby every Ugandan has a right, especially our children who are born here. They are also Ugandans. We want to leave a good legacy. 2018 should be a year to turn things around. So I come through by saying, please, we respect every opposition. There might be some people here who are pausing. Don't take any pictures. Don't prosecute anybody. And please, in Uganda, we in diaspora don't live under fear and intimidation. This is the land of the free. You are free here, and Uganda should be free. God bless you. For God and my country.
People power! People power! Thank you so much, Pastor Belinda. That's one of our own in the community. Here's the thing. We are not going to relent. We are not going to back down. We are going to continue to press on until our country is free. That's what I want to tell the people in Uganda. Thank you so much. Because of the limited nature of time, I'm going to be inviting Sheikh Dumba just for a minute. Then, he will take us into the next session where he will invite the Honorable Member of Parliament to speak to us. After that, we'll have a Q and A session where questions will be asked. Now, the question must be precise and brief. We are not going to intimidate anyone. We are not going to advocate for violence. Yes, sir. You are going to ask questions. Thank you so much. That's a great question. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The Honorable is coming. He'll address some of those issues. Now, one other thing. One other thing. Bostonians, Bostonians, I love you so much. One other thing. One other thing, Bostonians. The Honorable Member of Parliament, the Honorable, I mean, committee members, the Honorable Robert Chagulani, through the advice of his doctors, is not going to be shaking hands. And you know why? Because the doctors have cautioned him not to shake hands because of the fear of infections. I'm just putting that out. So he won't be shaking hands. So don't be disappointed if he doesn't shake your hand. Is that okay? Okay. Let me take this opportunity. The youth are going to ask questions. Don't worry about that. Let me take this opportunity to invite the one and only Sheikh Dumba, and he'll take it from here. Thank you so much. People power! People power! Our power! People power! Ladies and gentlemen, again, let me take this opportunity to thank you all for coming and sparing this time to come and be with us this night or this evening. And I'll be addressing Honorable Robert Chagulani directly. And I'll be sending a message from Muslims in the diaspora to Honorable Chagulani, to the parliament of Uganda. We in the U.S. have been taught. And we are good students. That's where we come most of the time. In the U.S., we are told that we can demonstrate. In the U.S., we are told that we have our rights. Including the right to worship, including the right to associate, including the right to move, and including the right to pay back to our nations. Honorable Chagulani, my name is Abdullah Dumba. I want to put it on record because I know it's going on record. A Ugandan by birth is a citizen of the United States. Most of my parents never in life has my parent touched the land in the U.S. of the U.S. They were all Ugandans. They died in Uganda. My eldest children are all in Uganda. I have some roots that are untouchable, unbreakable with Uganda. And so I think, and I'm sure that every Ugandan that is in the diaspora today, we share the same. We all love our dearest Uganda because that's where we came from. We would not be known we would not be known here in the U.S. They know us because... You are sitting in Little Kampala. Ladies and gentlemen, on your Kampala, we are free. What we are talking about is free. What we are saying is free. What we are talking about is free. I am your only beyond that to be in a certain tune. Now, you can sing a little bit. 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 And she is free. We are free. To you. To cover. tukorecha ne guruni, tuweleza senti. We are the second investors, number two investors. Muslim, I mean, Ugandans in the diaspora, we were second investors to Uganda. Banage, chumbadet, ma ma tuchimani, muchitage. You are the number two investors in Uganda because even a person that arrived yesterday is sending dollars to Uganda to support their family members. Ba boanga tere butame, kevuchi tukavia. But let me go to the point. And I'm going to mention these names just for us to think about them. And if you have anything that you can do to remember them and include them in our prayers. In April, on the 20th day, around evening time, Sheikh Abdulkarim Saint Amour was gunned mercilessly, was killed. I have connections, pardon me and allow me to pass to create that relationship that is personal between me and all these individuals. He was my schoolmate. We both studied in Saudi Arabia. We studied in Uganda. He went back to Uganda. He told, up to now, people whom he told are still teaching. But he was gunned down. No report has been ever presented to the Muslim community, leave alone his father to his father, neither to his mother, neither to the children that he left behind. And I'm sure, the last homework that I did, government of Uganda, and let me forward this to Honorable Chagulani. The Parliament of Uganda, I'm gonna hold you responsible if they don't go visit the family of Abdulkarim Saint Amour. On June 2012, just two months later, Sheikh Abu Bakr Kiwewa was also gunned down. On December 25 of 2014, Abdulkarri Mwaya in the eastern part of Uganda was also killed by gun. December 28 of 2014, imagine, they target two, two sheikhs, two Muslim clerics every year. At the beginning, even the middle, or at the end of the year. Sheikh Mustafa Bahiga was also gunned down. May 2015, Abdul Rashid Wa Fula was also gunned down. June 30, 2015, Hassan Chiria gunned down. The gentleman who used to be a sheikh, who was considered to be a rebel, who decided to go and partner with President Museveni, Sheikh Mohammed Chigundu, all his life, and said, "I'm going to serve for the nation." The plan was to gun him down. Chigundu gunned down. And lately, the young man, the blood of Uganda, someone that is serving under to secure Ugandans, a young policeman, Mohammed, who? Mohammed Chilumira is paid by a bullet. To all of those people, for all of those people, the Muslims have this message to the government of Uganda. They have to produce a list of every single person. President Museveni has to produce a list of every Ugandan, every Muslim that was killed, and invite the family members and pay them and tell them, "This is the reason." Bring that person in front of that family and let them speak directly to the kids of those gentlemen and say, "This was the reason why we killed your dad." I think that would be fair. Yasinika Umar. A young man who said, "I'll stay next to my brother, the young blood." "I'm an old fellow. I'm old. I'm not able to go and run, do whatever they do." Honorable Chagulani. But if a young blood stands up and says that I'm gonna fight for the nation, fight for Uganda, not hitting anyone but through the bullet and you kill that person? This is the message, ladies and gentlemen. We have to say, to call this to its end and say, enough is enough. Honorable Chagulani, I know you are one. But I know here that you have 10, maybe 15 other members of parliament. But maybe they are scared to stand up and speak the way you speak. But I want to give every single one some good news, that your day will come and no one will stop it. When that day comes, no one will come and intercede and say, "No, you cannot go. You will have to go." Mohammed Chilumira said that if you speak, you die. And if you don't speak, you die. And he indeed was killed. Muslims do not defy the fact that people die. We don't deny it. We believe we have to die. Actually, Muslims do believe death is there. But the nature and the circumstances under which someone is killed, that's where the question arises. Honorable Chagulani, we will invite, we will give you a package. This is coming from the Muslims in the diaspora. I'm here in the US, but I can guarantee you that I'm speaking for all Muslims in the diaspora. But more than that, more than that, I'm speaking for all Ugandans. Kawesi was a fighter, was a protector of all Ugandans. Regardless of his belief, Abirika, regardless of his tribe, these people don't deserve to die to be killed using a bullet. Honorable Chagulani, please be in a voice, and we shall pray. And that's our Almighty God to help you and lead you through the journey together with those people that are troubling with you. When your time comes, you will also go. But better go when you have done something. We believe today, we believe today, you have done some part. You played your part. And we believe, if you are to depart, let it be. That's gonna be God's decree. Nothing can change it. Ladies and gentlemen, Ugandans, Muslims all over in the diaspora demanding death. And these people have to be brought to mass of government. Because no one is following them today. We have to stand for them. Thank you so much again, Honorable Chagulani for coming. Thank you organizers for organizing this. And please, Monsonyo Lokwati, but I'm emotional sometimes. When I'm emotional, you don't control yourself, but I think I have controlled myself. Thank you so much. People Power! People Power! People Power! Chagulani, Bobby Wine, oh yeah! Chagulani, Bobby Wine, oh yeah! Zake, oh yeah! Sewaniana, oh yeah! President Museveni, please. That's people's voice. Chogada watteva, chogada, that is people's voice. President Museveni, please, kakane baona, ogeno umreko. Ladies and gentlemen, All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you so much. Thank you so much. You can move forward. As you do that, ladies and gentlemen, I have the honor. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I do have the honor. I am given another task. And this is one of the biggest tasks. Maybe I have to be humbled because I never know, you never know. This is probably one of those big individuals that is going to come, that is in making, that I'm inviting today to address this gathering. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the honor to invite Honorable Robert Chagulani to town. Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, the youth were complaining. They said, "We only see Dumba. We see Abasadiyawakuru." But this is one of yours. Honorable Chagulani is one of you. So please listen attentively and please take the message and carry it far and beyond. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, listen to this. I say, "We are fighting for freedom." It has always been fun. And yes, I will be lying if I said I don't miss my old life. I miss my old life. It was so much fun to have so much money to make, but so little a difference to make. I am humbled to be talking to you, ladies and gentlemen. I am glad to have been one of the consumers of the wise words from the elders we had. And indeed, I had the complaints from the young people. But I must say that until we got leaders who are elders but don't behave like elders, we always benefited from the wise counsel of elders. And indeed, we still hold our elders in very high esteem, in very high regard, especially the cautious and on-point elders. Ladies and gentlemen, I did not intend initially to meet many people because that was the advice of my doctors and my family. They thought I needed some time to myself. But because I also know that it was not just the power of humanity but the power of God that I'm still able to talk to you today. So I planned to have prayers with my brothers in Boston in church. And being a Catholic, it was planned and indeed, I was in church earlier today. But also knowing that I'm a grandson of Hajmo Sagarien Kanawa in Masaka. Yes, my mother comes from a Muslim family. And it is not a mistake that most of my closest friends are Muslims. Nobean Lee is a Muslim. Adam is a Muslim. Mosse Semakula is a Muslim. Yasinika Umar, who took the bullets that were made for me, is a Muslim, and many other guys. So that is the connection that I had. And indeed, having talked to some of my closest friends in Boston, we had to have a conversation with my Muslim brothers and sisters, especially at a very sensitive time like this. But again, I was very encouraged by the open-heartedness and tolerance of the Muslims here who themselves suggested that this should not be a meeting of only Muslims but all brothers and sisters who share the same aspirations with them. So that is how we've ended up here. In church, I got the opportunity to communicate in my mother language. And indeed, that was a chance for me to save enough English for this occasion. Ladies and gentlemen, I greet you and I bring warm greetings from home. Especially my Muslim brothers. Allow me to salute in a special way. Assalamualaikum warahmatullahi wabarakatuh. Ladies and gentlemen, allow me to thank you, all of you, Ugandans in Boston, Ugandans across America, Ugandans in the diaspora, in other parts of the world. And yes, Ugandans back home who I know are watching us for standing with us in the cause, for standing with us when you try to raise the voices of reason, when you try to highlight the plight of Ugandans. I must say that maybe I wouldn't be alive if you did not exert the pressure that you exerted. You guys may not know, but you actually saved my life. You enabled me to travel here, but you continue to save the lives of the people back home. It's at this time again that I want to send my thoughts and kind regards to our comrades who continue to suffer, some are in hospital, to our comrades who continue to suffer, some are in hospital, some are in jail, and yes, some died. We lost my brother, Yasin Kauma, I'm sorry if I mention him again and again and again. We lost a very close friend and brother, Afande Mohammed Chirumira. We lost a brother called Serungaya, this is a guy that the world would never know. He was just a few classes ahead of me in our school, in Gomba, in Bukalaji. This guy was dragged from his house and shot, dead. And of course, many brothers, whose names I don't even half of hate, the guys who are killed in Michiana, and many, many other people that continue to suffer in our country. Please don't get them out of your prayers and thoughts. Ladies and gentlemen, like I said initially, I used to be just an artist, having my fun. Every time I came to Boston or to other parts of America, it was a business of signing autographs, working with my swagger, doing my music and making money. And yes, like I said earlier, I still miss that old life. But I decided that it will not just be entertainment, it will be edutainment. And I took it a notch higher, and I dared to believe that we people can each one individually play a role in the liberation of our country. Why do we talk about our country, ladies and gentlemen? First and foremost, I want you to know that I am not here to teach you anything new. You know what I am talking about. Many of you happen to be in America, not simply because you don't like home, but because what is happening in home is not what you feel you deserve. And you jump on that plane because you, your mind is thinking bigger. Because when you're in Uganda, where you are is not who you are. Because you are searching for what they call greener pastures. That's why you are here, and that is how we have ended up losing some of the best brains in our country, some of the best talents in our country. Because our talent, our country does not reward talent. That is the state of our country, ladies and gentlemen. Many of you live home because of the injustices. Many of you live home because of the numerous tortures. I was so humbled to see that the world got up in arms over my torture. And yet, when I look at the torture of other people, particularly the Muslim clerics, my condition is put to shame. Yes, you've seen it, and I'm not saying this because it's Muslims that invited me. But we've seen many unmentioned cases of Muslim clerics coming to court limping, and it does not even make it to the news bulletins. I was joking with my friend after they assassinated the honorable Abiriga, may he rest in peace. He made a tweet and said, just a few minutes after Abiriga was shot, he said, "If you are Muslim and you leave me a kawanda, run." Because that is the soft target. That is the kind of country where we live, where corruption is the order of the day, where extrajudicial killings is the order of the day. And indeed, the president in his recent State of the Nation address, he mentioned that he knows some of the killers. He just didn't explain why they are not apprehended. That is the country where we live, ladies and gentlemen. So many of you who are here, you, 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 what is happening home, you know it. Many of you are more knowledgeable than myself. I'm only glad that the ghetto people where I come from raised me and gave me the opportunity to be able to address you, ladies and gentlemen. And it is that opportunity that I try to use. That opportunity that I, I, I want to try and maximize. Every given opportunity in my life, at least for as long as I live. So ladies and gentlemen, when you see me talking to you today, it's not out of fun. I don't enjoy this, no, I don't. This is not even instrumental, there's no music, it is not fun. I don't like it, but because this is where we are pushed. It's because every day my children are growing, and I want them to live in a better country. It's because nobody is safe. And maybe it's because I've been silent for a very, very long time. So ladies and gentlemen, you may wonder why we struggle, what is our purpose? Some friend asked me after all this, a friend who loved me very much, said, "Bobby." Said, "Bobby, we love you, but I mean, you have a successful music career, and you're a member of parliament, why don't you just embark on your big music career and your parliamentary salary, and enjoy what you call a comfortable life?" I mean, Bobby, you've made it. You, you have boats that you don't drive, you have money that you don't spend. What is your problem? Ladies and gentlemen, when I look at the life of the people where I grew up from, the many friends that I miss only once a year, or once in two years, or if I spend three, four years without coming to America, then I won't see them. In those four years, I was chatting with my friend Laban today. I always take silly jokes with my friends. And I told him, "Man, it's like you're dead." And he also said, "Yeah, Bobby, it's like you're dead," because we never see each other. We just meet once in two, three, four years. We lost that, which turned out to be a privilege now. We don't see each other, because conditions don't allow it. So, looking at all that, ladies and gentlemen, we struggle because we looked ahead of where we are. And this is what we see when we close our eyes, even amidst pain, even amidst challenges. When we close our eyes, we envision a Uganda that is comfortable for everybody, a Uganda that offers equal opportunity for everybody, regardless of who you know or where you come from, regardless of your tribe, your religion, or your political party. That is why we struggle. In a Uganda where I will come and comfortably say what I believe, and you're not going to come and beat me up. We want to live in a Uganda where, where you work hard, you assured that you're going to be rewarded. A kind of Uganda where, when you hustle in America and you ship things back home, they are not overtaxed. We want a Uganda where, when I go back to the ghetto, I know that those girls who I went to school with are not going to die giving birth simply because there are no gloves or cheap things like those in hospitals. That is a country that we want. A country generally where, you know, people reign supreme, where leaders are servants of people, not vice versa. But today, in Uganda, the gun is the master, and all citizens are slaves, okay? It does not work like that. America has more guns than us, but the people reign supreme. So that's the kind of country that we want. Unfortunately, that is not the country that we have. Back home, we live in fear. You cannot even expose a crime, because exposing a crime is seen as committing a crime. And that is why we lost Chirumira, and we continue to lose people like that. Who want to live in a country where we are not ruled by fear. In a country where we are free. Because it is achievable, it is not magic. That is what we were promised in 1986. So ladies and gentlemen, when you see us struggling, we're not just having fun. We're not doing it for fun, okay? We are raising a voice, and we're trying to reach out to everybody, because we know everybody has a role to play in this. And when we thought and thought and thought, we realized that we've been promised the same thing since independence, regime after regime, regime after regime. Each one promises a fundamental change. Until we realized that the only solution is not to bank on individuals, but on all the people. After all, we are trying to make people reign supreme. Nobody is going to give us that, we are going to get us, to get ourselves that, and we are going to get it all of us. And that brings me to what you're chatting, people power?
Power!
Our power?
People power!
Ladies and gentlemen, it was out of casual conversations with fellow young people in Uganda, and all the conversations we hold backstage with friends, and we envisioned that we need to harness that unifying spirit, that unifying aspirations, because we have the same hopes and indeed, same fears. And that is how we came up with the idea of people power. Because people power is our power, and our power is people power. Gunpower cannot liberate us, gunpower continues to enslave us. Because it gives power to the guns. But people power gives power to the people, and who are the people? We are the people. So ladies and gentlemen, allow me to assert again that people power is not about Bobby wine, don't even get it wrong. I am only here as one of the over forty million Ugandans who are oppressed. Our country has been divided between oppressors and the oppressed. While the oppressed are very few, but oppressing us, who are actually very many, keeping us in terrible conditions. You guys who live in America, you will say with me that here in America, even if you're broke, your poverty only stops in your house. But when you walk out of your house, you start enjoying the wealth of the entire country. Yes. It even makes you forget how broke you are until you get back to your house. But back home in Uganda, no matter how rich you are, your richness stops in your house. Once you walk out of your house, you start facing the poverty of the entire country. The smell, the dust, the bad roads, the insecurity, everything. That is not what we want. No, we want better. And to achieve that, it is not going to take one person, it is going to take all of us. For so many years, we have trusted individuals to liberate us. President Museveni today claims, tells us stories like, "Naige Soloyange, I went and killed my animal, and now I want to kill..." He even goes ahead to disrespect us and tells us he, at his age, is bearing the vision of all of us. Why? Because we let him. Okay? So we don't need another big daddy, no. Okay? We don't need another Messiah, no. We don't need another savior, no. And this is to tell my brothers and sisters, who have been thinking that they make me happy when they call me a savior, I am nobody's savior, I am just one of you. Okay? It does not make sense if we don't stand together, but if we stand together, we make a point, because we are equally as important as each other. Do not leave it to us, don't leave it to me, okay? I was arrested, beaten, and incarcerated. I was not even able to read a single Facebook tweet, I mean, Facebook post, or a tweet, or even read newspapers, but you made it happen even without me. So I want you to know that you must not underestimate your ability. Even as we go back home, I know they plan so many evil plans for me. But I want you to know that for as long as you stand, it does not matter what they do to a few of us. The power of the people has started, and it cannot be stopped. I know that our government does not know how to deal with us. They don't know how to deal with us, it has never happened. We have never been as united as we are. They have never seen so many young people with one voice and one resolve. They don't know how to deal with us. They don't know what to tell us, they cannot lie to us anymore. Okay? They cannot intimidate us anymore. They cannot block our voices anymore. They cannot silence us anymore. You see, of late, I have seen some disparate measures by the government. They've struggled so much to label us a violent group of people. I want to make this clear, we are not a violent group of people. We despise violence, okay? We are not violent, they just want us to be labeled violent, because violence is the only language they know, okay? They are the masters of violence, okay? So they want to label us violent, so that they can respond to us with violence, okay? They want to provoke us into violence, so that they do what? They find reason to kill us, but we are smarter than them, and I want at this juncture to also inform you. Thank you, thank you. People power! People power! Our power! I will remind you that the Minister of Security was on national TV, and he called us terrorists, because we advocate for people power. But to me, that should make us glad. But to me, that should make us glad. Because even the great Nelson Mandela was labeled a terrorist by the apartheid regime. Okay? They've gone ahead, I am informed, to print T-shirts which are read to plant people among us, to throw stones and cause chaos so that they can respond to us with bullets. I am calling upon you, my brothers, especially those at home, do not fall in their trap. Let us continue to be smarter than them. And yes, you have seen the head of state moving with bags of money. Yes. You've seen them move with bags of money, our money. Okay? Taking it to the ghetto people to buy them into silence because they don't know how to deal with us. But I also said to them, "Museveni", Now, for you people who live in America and indeed all people that have had the rare opportunity. Okay. Finally, finally, I want to call upon you brothers and sisters to continue being assertive. I mentioned it that you guys are special ones. Back home, we hold each one of you in high regard. Because, yes, the money that they are using to oppress us, they are actually borrowing that money in our names. To us, raise our voice in the necessary offices and indeed I've spoken to a few leaders. I'd rather just you see the results. Because Uganda is not an isolated case, ladies and gentlemen. We are part of the family of nations. And for a long time, our development partners have actually been coming off as partners in crime. So keep asserting your voices. Go to your congressmen and congresswomen. Go to the necessary offices. We'll be in touch with your leaders and also you, don't leave it to us. Let everybody do what they can do. And ultimately, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to liberate ourselves sooner than later. I thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I thank the team that has been so patriotic. All the colleagues that I cannot mention. I thank the Muslim leaders. Okay. Okay. Listen. Now this, this capella will go to the young people there at the back. Okay, listen to me, listen to me. Listen to me, all the young people in the house. All the young people in the house. I just want to remind you that you're stronger than you imagine. Alright. Alright, listen to this. Listen to this. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the warm welcome and thank you for the motivation and the support and everything that came from that side to him. Let that be a message to every single Ugandan out there that the youth are taking over. That's why they are here also. They want to say something and send a message to all the youth in Uganda. But before we get there, ladies and gentlemen, please lend me your ears. Let us keep peace and security in this area. This is a business area. Please hold the hand of your young ones. Let them be here. This is our designated area. This is where it's supposed to be, not up in the entire hotel. Please, banang invite you. Honorable, honorable Chagulani, to serve banang entity for security or for health reasons, let me put it that way. Please do not come humbly asking. Do not shake hands with honorable Chagulani. Please, let us wave at him for security reasons. We know we love, we know we like you so much, but we have, we have to respect doctor's advice. And for those who are taking pictures, please, those who are taking pictures as well, create a room so it can have him also, their brothers and sisters and the young ones who need to have some questions so they can put them forward and hope. Thank you so much. So we are going to get three questions. As quick as possible. The youth? This is the third time that we see in Ghana at what's in by us in Ghana for reunion here, you are here, I care for them, Rockbee grounds. Ah, talks in Ghana, Katono. Now, Bobby Wine, to answer. Agent Chimu, we want to thank you for everything you've done. But more so, I'm requesting you, please, please Bobby Wine, when you go back home, engage the university fraternity. All the universities. Struggle, struggle, struggle. So the good thing, Mbo Go, Mbo Go, the Royce Mboka's Bonna, but it could ground, era, they can bring these guys on board. The Lukanga Martins, the word, these people are ready to get us moving. Um, there is nothing as powerful as an idea whose time has come. People power!
Our power!
People power!
Our power!
Our power! Ladies and gentlemen, let me take this opportunity to thank the Kenyans who are with us in this struggle. They stood very firm with us. Thank you so much. Before we get, people power. Before we get the next question from my sister Agnes, the bus to New York, please, I want you to get this phone number, 617-803-6187. That's brother John Molinde. The bus is forty dollars. The bus is forty dollars. We are departing on the 26th Wednesday. It's going to be 6:30, St. Mary's School Street in Wartham. Then we'll be heading to the United Nations to continue to press until Uganda becomes a free country. The reason why we are going to New York, let it be clear to everybody. Reason why we are going to New York is to expose the total lies that President Museveni is going to tell the nations, the UN. We are going to preempt everything that is going to tell them. We are organized, President Museveni this time, coming to New York. We are organized. New York is not going to be easy for you. We shall hand you over to the entire world and you know exactly how bad you have driven this country. Banang, we want you to say, in number 617-803-8, I mean 6183, Mommy Molinde, who know I know, Mokumi Resimo, Organizing Yakuwera, Organizing Mokutoa, the bus. Thank you so much. Okay. Before, he's passing all this information. Before, before honorable answer the question, let us get the second question from this young lady, Agnes. Agnes, please, you're welcome.
Thank you so much. People power! People power! I'm here because I came here to study. I'm a history major from University of Massachusetts-Boston. I'm in law school right now and I'm finishing next year. My word here goes to all young Ugandans back home that these are our rights. There are some rights that God gave us just by creation and Museveni tells us that he's helping us to even protest. We are supposed to be able to speak. And Museveni tells us that we don't have that right. I'm telling all younger Ugandans back home, do not leave honorable Chagulani and all the other people who are suffering. Get involved. Taxi drivers, border border people, people are going to protest, Tebaina Transport. Transport them. That is how people, civil rights movement here succeeded. People helped each other. People have to support each other. Abayina, Bakozibo, Mkuzua, Gendo, protesting. Give them time of, Bakwetosawo, Genda, Osobolo, Kugia, Asobolo, Kugenda, to all liberate our country. Museveni, Atusobola, because Atwa, he uses dividing rule. He divides us by tribe, by religion, by all sorts of divisions and by economic status. So people, Abayina, some status treat others badly. In this movement... In this movement to succeed, we need everyone. We need, of course, we need our border, we need our taxi. But you know, get involved, so, to get them involved. Everyone has to be part of this movement, or to succeed. Numbers are very important. So, um, you know, I'm really grateful to the people here, but. Again, the other students in secondary school campus, everyone has to be involved. That's my word. Thank you. People power.
Two more questions. The honourable will answer all these questions, then we'll let him go. A question from my brother Ronnie.
Good evening, everybody. Um, this question goes to Robert Chagulani. As a journalist, I felt that it's good to hold you accountable. On one of the shows. Let us do powering some money to save ourselves from any other penalties, number one. Number two, to also keep this place open for us, even next time, when we decide to come back. So we are looking, write a number, cash app. Please, 617, I would like to see everybody writing down this number. Because I know you don't have cash, you have money on your cards. And I'm not going to allow, allow me my name. Honourable Chagulani, next time, or any other member. We need to pay this. 617-803-6183. Please, Mr. Molinde, let us know if cash is coming in. Please, Mr. Molinde, let us know if money is coming in. If you have cash, box it out. This is very open. Fundraiser is open. We need to save ourselves and protect our name. We don't go to a hotel in Tassasula. We have to pay this. Honourable, write down, just ask, be brief and precise. Just three questions and we go.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Joe Maleka. Hi, I'm going to be really brave, so. My question is regarding safety. How are we guaranteed that we can go back to Uganda and not have to worry about coming back? Because we've had numerous reports that a lot of people have been going back due to protesting out here and they're not going to be able to make it back. So how are we guaranteed that we'll be able to go back and come back? Thank you.
And the organization, International Forum for Democracy. But they're going to, they're going to. The European Union, where you have to vote, Museveni. Because they're going to vote, the resolution for UN. Because they're going to vote, the resolution for Uganda.
Salam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Thank you, honourable Chagulani. Mine is a humble request. Seventy-five percent of women are ill, they are all Muslims. They are all Jews.
Thank you, thank you for your questions. But now, I'm going to answer you, I'm going to. Sometime, we need to know. So, if you don't mind, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, are we together? On his or her behalf and on behalf of very many people that think like him or her. So, meet them to the best of my knowledge. Now, my name is Sirwan Nunga Professor. Sirwan Nunga Lecturer, I'm going to Uganda. I never was, now I'm going to come here. And to get a message. But this is a, due to engaging university fraternity. That's a strong thing. We continue to hold conversations and indeed, all these ideas and among, among the people who are with, you know, coming up with the people power idea, who also had university students. So, we continue, however, do not leave this to us. I said this before and I'm saying it again, that this is not a political party. This is a cause that everybody can join and play a role in their own ability. So, please, Chikole. There was a Kenyan brother who Swahili only got a small percentage of. But I want to say to you, my Kenyan brother, and I want through you to send a message to our Kenyan brothers and indeed, all our brothers in East Africa and the rest of Africa. Please thank them for standing with us, particularly the Kenyans. You guys have always been with us through history. You stood with us when we're fighting for independence, only that we got our independence before you guys. You stood with us in the eighties, when President Museveni was still a freedom fighter. And yes, you are standing with us this time, only that this time, our struggle is not about shedding any blood. So we can never forget you guys from Kenya. We love you and we respect you. Thank you very much. My brother Ronnie Mayanja asked two questions. Although he, I heard some people disapproving of his questions, I want you to listen and listen very carefully, ladies and gentlemen. Ronnie Mayanja asked a question. Let us respect views that are different from ours, so we can continue to. It's not the people who want our, the citizens equally, regardless of what region you come from. That is our vision for Uganda. Okay? We want to live in a Uganda which is not so deeply divided like it is now. Our country is so divided, there's so much hate. Country that you will miss coming back to. My brother Ronnie Mayanja, that have a problem that every time we are arrested, the bail money we are charged is too high, it is a million plus. These are people that don't have jobs. These are people that are protesting because their condition is terrible. And the state is even making it harder for.